I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Board of Education for the School District of Waukesha. This is Wednesday, March 13th. And to start off our meeting, I'd like you to please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzync.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Barb is excused tonight, Sue. And will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Before we get going, we do have quite an audience tonight. And I don't know if everybody had heard this, but what we like to do is anyone who wants to address the board during the commentary time of the meeting, if you would please sign up, there are signup sheets on the table to my left. Kind by Ellie. Wave Ellie. And please sign up ahead of time. And Sue will get me those sheets before you address us. The other thing that I'd like to note tonight is we may have a need for translation, and we do have a translator here. So there may be some times where we'll have to have a little bit of a break for the translation, and we'll hopefully keep things moving along quickly, though. But we want to make sure that everybody is in full understanding of all the comments. Okay. We're going to begin our meeting tonight with bright lights. We have Principal Dennis Griffin here from Prairie, and he's going to be talking about team teaching. Dennis?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I have my wonderful team here, Jennifer Redstock. Emily Sawinski, Barb Blot, Melissa Brendel, Maria Classy, and Kim Ferguson. And we are here so that you know that our vision is clear at Prairie Elementary.
So, two years ago, we began our journey making our theory of action. And one of the things that we noticed when our team dug into our theory of action was that we were missing a connection to our students. And so we decided this year to make a change and create a second eye of our Puma. And we dug into team teaching this year, and we took a launch into that. And from doing a lot of research and learning about what team teaching is, our sale team came up with three areas that we wanted to focus on, which was assessment-driven, intentional co-planning, and how it's being delivered. And today, you're going to see the benefits and some data to show how our team teaching is paying off. So our theme as a Prairie school is better together. So we have two eyes of our Puma, which helps us see in our direction that we are going in.
So one of the benefits of team teaching is the collaboration that goes on between the teachers and the classroom. We do planning, obviously, to meet our students' needs. And one of the really cool things about team teaching is that we can plan for our students' needs. And the two of us, Barb and I, actually both teach third grade together. So we can run two mini lessons at the exact same time based on what our students need. So we're using pre-assessment data from pre-assessments, and we can say, like, we just finished up a time unit. So, and we actually have some data up there that you can see on the left, kind of with the red and the green, that was our pre-assessment from our time. So you can see that there are students who still were not quite solid on telling time to the half hour and to fifteen-minute increments, or kind of the five-minute increments, which was a second-grade standard. And our third-grade standard is elapsed time, which are the two kind of reddish columns on the left, mostly red columns on the left. So what we were able to do is plan, intentionally planned, two separate mini lessons where one group focused a little bit more on reviewing that telling time to the five-minute increments so that they were solid. Because if they don't know that, there's no way that they can figure out the elapsed time. So taking that and getting them solid in kind of what they were missing at that point, and then moving them on to the expected grade-level standard.
And then, so from the mini lessons that we divide, then whatever the students are showing us, based on like what the activities are that we have, or what they're showing us in like whole-group settings in our mini lesson, then we also group them based on what they need more of or less of. The grouping is always flexible and fluid, so the same students don't stay in the same groups even for the same week. It's always changing every single day. We always debrief after a subject. And then Kim and I talk to each other about, what were you seeing? What was I seeing? And then we kind of go from there and make different activities for the students and group them according to what they need, and then plan for how we're going to differentiate that.
One of the benefits of team teaching is that you can take the strengths of one teacher, and that can balance out the strengths of the other teacher. So we actually went to some teacher teams and asked them, what are the strengths of each of you? How do you balance each other out? So in one of the grade levels, the first teacher has a lot of out-of-the-box ideas, and the second teacher is more specific on how to execute those ideas. And it also is very encouraging to the first teacher. In another grade level, the person, the one teacher asks, what if? What if we did this? Kind of the dreamer. And the other person is extremely organized and makes it happen. In another grade level, one of the teachers is an intentional planner and the data collector, and the other teacher always asks, how can we make it more engaging for our students? And in another team, one of the teachers had specialized in math, and the other had specialized in reading. So they were able to help each other become proficient in both areas.
So we would love to stay here all night and tell you about all the benefits that we've seen already this year for team teaching. But what better way would we be able to bring that message to you than to hear it directly from our scholars? So while you're watching this video, be thinking about what our scholars are saying about team teaching, and most importantly, how has it affected their learning this year?
We're patient.
Maybe it's just the first clip, man.
Team teaching has helped me impact my learning by showing me how to do harder things above my level.
So she was responding with the ideas about how in the two different language workshop groups, they will hear, or they are placed with kids at different groups, right? So during their different units, they are able to talk more with kids in their whole groups.
Would you please talk into the microphone so our TV audience can hear us?
I'm sorry. So what she was saying was that when we have language workshops, that we're both running a language workshop together, but instead of having the same, say, twenty, twenty-five kids all year and hearing the same ideas, they now get to mix up their groups constantly. Each unit, we mix up the groups, so it's a different set of kids each time, so that they're hearing all kinds of different ideas throughout the year.
Okay. All right. So now I'm going to talk about kind of the benefits of co-teaching. From the team teaching, being a special education teacher, I've been able to co-teach and push into the classroom and teach alongside my colleagues. Something different this year that we've done with our special education department is we now focus our meetings around instruction and data. I have a graphic right here where we get together at all of our meetings, and we talk about what resources we're using, and we talk about next steps. This is one of our students, and she's very excited to show you what she has been doing and the benefits of co-teaching and team teaching.
I use my iPad to help me talk.
Where do you go to school?
I go to school at Prairie.
Good job. Where do you live?
I go to school at Prairie. I live in Waukesha. Pets.
Right, that's the name of the story, pets. Read first.
Pets. Pets.
Read.
The cat. The cat.
Good job, turn the page.
The cat.
Turn the page.
The cat.
Nope, turn the page. Next page. Page, read, point to the words. Point to the words.
Dog. The dog.
Good job.
The dog.
Next page.
The dog.
Point to the words.
The.
Look at the picture.
Bunny. The bunny.
All right, turn the page.
Hooray.
You're almost done. Right, hooray. She's very excited. So that was a team effort. We all sat down and collaborated across the board on how a student who is nonverbal, how we can get her reading in the classroom. So some of the other benefits, I took the data from last year and this year at the end of March where we are, and our special education scholars, and where they were at with their grade levels, so for their reading levels. Last year, at this time, five scholars had dropped levels. This year, we had no scholars that dropped levels. And when we compare, our reading levels this year have increased significantly.
So another benefit of team teaching is being able to let educators help teach each other. So they get a live model view from each other every single day. They can watch each other teach, and they can give each other feedback. And that is one of the benefits that we're seeing in our building right now. We had our e-sale done, and if you look at the data, it goes from fall of 2017, which is that blue, and then February of 2019, which is our purple. This year, one of our goals was to get 100% of our educators by the end of the year to all be in the meeting category for teaching small groups. And in February, we had almost every single teacher there. The two teachers who are in the not-applicable category, they were doing running records, which is another great thing to be doing. And at that time, when we happened to be e-sailing through, they just didn't, they were doing good practices, just didn't see a small group. So basically, where we are in fall, we're already meeting that category because we're able to not just have one coach in the building, we have many coaches in the building, who they're learning and growing from each other. And from seeing this growth, we'll help look at this chart here. This is our running record outcomes from the fall of 2017 to now present. Our student learning outcome this year that we set was 70% of our scholars, so kindergarten through fifth grade, will meet the grade-level benchmark according to their running record. We're already at 70% right now. So if we continue our trajectory, we're going to, we need to obviously redo our SLO. But that contributes to our team teaching because of the fact that we're able to, when we go back and look at our e-sale, learn from each other. Our small groups are paying off, which is now showing in our running record data, and it's continuing to grow and climb. And we're not even done with the school year yet, so I can't wait to see where we end. We sent out a survey to our staff about what they thought about team teaching, and I asked them just to give three words about their team teaching experience. And the biggest word that came back was collaborative. This is a team effort, just like in any other way. We're allowed, we're able to now collaborate around the whole child and create that community and learners, not just in our classroom, but us as educators to be learners and to be supportive and to differentiate for all of our learners throughout. So we have one last little clip that I'll let them show.
So this is just a little clip from our third graders, from Kim and I, our third graders, and what they think. Hopefully, it'll show and play.
We are better together.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Baumgart? Is this throughout the school, or is it just select teams?
The only exception is kindergarten. They do not team teach, but the rest of us.
All the rest of the school?
But our kindergarten made a shift. They went from specializing to teaching all subject areas. So they, instead of bringing the kids together, they're still doing like, they shifted from math and literacy specialists, so now they're both doing it. So they do plan, they co-plan together, but they don't shuffle the kids together.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dietz?
I'm very excited about your data driving your instruction. We all know that that works. And also, one of the keys to, or key components to team teaching is collaboration. Can you tell me a little bit about your collaboration time?
Well, I can say that it's been worked out that each of the teachers has specials at the same time, so we have ample time for collaboration. There's also lunch and before school as well. So we do have quite a bit of collaborative time. Oh, there's also PLCs, our PLC time every Thursday that we collaborate.
Very good. And are there other schools in the district that are following a similar model that you're involved with?
I believe that there are a few here and there in different buildings, but not, as far as I know, no school has done it across the board like Prairie has.
Well, congratulations for your efforts, your initiative, and obviously the results. You're doing good things, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one. So you wanted to improve team teaching from one year to another. Can you talk a little bit about what that process looked like? How you determined, how you're going to tackle that?
Are you talking about like what next year will look like?
Well, I thought you had started off the program saying that the previous year, you were team teaching, but you felt you wanted to make some improvements. And so this year, you made some improvements. So I wanted to kind of understand how you determined what those improvements were going to be, and what process you went through to come to that. Because you did that as a team, I'm assuming, right?
Okay, sure. So two years ago, Jen Baker and myself, we were team teaching in second grade and first grade. First grade, sorry. We looped from first to second, so hard to keep track of those years. And I don't know how the buzz came around the building. In fact, I'm still trying to get that answer from Dennis. But throughout the year, he said that grade levels were coming to him and wanting to do team teaching like we were doing. So it was just us in the building, team teaching a year ago, and other teams were getting excited, they were seeing how happy, they were seeing the results that we were getting. And I kept saying it to Dennis, I said, well, nobody has come to observe us. How do they know they want to do it? And he said, well, they didn't have to come and observe you. They just see, they're seeing the results, they're just feeling the excitement from us as well.
So one part of our theory of action is growing, fostering a community of learners. And so one of the pieces that a lot of the teachers kept saying was, is they didn't feel like they could foster that full community of learners because students were switching from class to class because of the specializing. So they didn't feel like they got to know the whole learner. So that was one of the shifts that our team talked about in our sale meeting at the end of the school year and then throughout the summer. I don't know if that helped answer.
Yes. Yeah, Dennis, go ahead.
We had a wager, make or break my promise. Also, we couldn't have done it without the support of the district, because they allowed us to come up to them with a vision of how we can take out some of the walls to really bring our classrooms together to better meet the needs of our students. So honestly, this is a collaborative effort, not just in our school, but throughout our entire district. So we're very thankful and appreciative of the support that we get from the district.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you. This is a wonderful presentation. Keep up the good work. Okay, moving on to our report from our student representatives. We have representatives from North High School tonight, Brianna and Haley. At least I think we have a report from North. Maybe they're out. There they go. Here in the overflow rooms. Welcome.
Welcome.
Is the mic working, Benjamin? It's working.
Test.
Yep, it's working.
All right, welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting us this evening. Tonight, I have two wonderful young ladies representing North High School. Tonight, we have 12th grader Brianna Donahue and 11th grader Haley Blagden. To give you the latest updates and reports with what's going on at North. So hopefully, we'll be able to connect here in just a moment.
They probably could do it. Thank you. All right, you guys ready to take over the pictures? There we go. Okay.
Hey. Hi, I'm Brianna Donahue. I'm a senior at North.
And I'm Haley. I'm a junior at North. You already heard that.
The first thing that we have is choir. Recently, they had a trip to Chicago. Recently, they had a trip to Chicago where they got to see Hamilton for the second time, because they went last year as well. And they got to visit other high schools in the Milwaukee area, and they exchanged music, exchanged music with those other schools, and they got to watch a dress rehearsal for the musicals. So that was exciting. And they have a concert coming up, and they're going to be performing at a Brewers game, singing the National Anthem, which is pretty cool. The Drama Club just recently had their musical called The Addams Family, and they had the highest amount of pre-sold tickets ever in the history of our drama program, so that's super exciting. And just as that one's done, they have the play coming up, and that's called Up the Downward Staircase. The marching band, after Winning State, went down to Tennessee, and we actually got to sweep that competition. We came home with 13 trophies and three plaques, all first place. We also have our new season starting up. They announced the new leadership team and the new show, which is called Metamorphosis. Academicathlon had a really exciting year. We participated in locals, and we made it to regionals. There, we took away a bunch of ribbons. We took away the first, first-place ribbon in the past decade for our Academicathlon program, which was super exciting. Student Council has successfully planned homecoming, pep rallies, all that fun stuff. We also have a blood drive coming up. Our last blood drive that we had this year, we exceeded our goal of 60 people by almost another 30 people, which is super exciting. And that's been happening for the past two years now. We've been filling up all those spots for the blood drive, which is really cool. Ecology Club has been making hallway displays about reduced re-use and recycling. And we're also focusing on eating lower on the food chain. We made cowboy caviar, which is seen in that picture right there. And we've had a large increase in members with all the stuff that we've been doing from about 10 people to 30, which is super exciting. E-Club, we just recently had the College Fair, and Key Club helps with the parking lot, setting up tables. That was super fun. We've been playing bingo at Linen Grove. We went to Mr. Bob's Under the Bridge, and we got to help feed and provide clothing for the homeless, which is super fun. We also are going to be adding dates with that, and we're also going to be making Miracle Mats to help out homeless people in that area, which is super exciting.
And just one more thing as far as Key Club. The members in Key Club have grown so much over the past year. I would say there were like 40 people in Key Club last year, and this year, it's close to 80 or 90 people. It's a lot, so.
Yeah, and we have a majority of those people actively participating in almost every volunteer opportunity that we have, which is super exciting. And we have Service Learning Day coming up, where we're going to be going to Lowell Elementary, and we're going to be helping weed and mulch their front area and helping them make a fidget hallway, which sounds really cool. DECA, we had one of our members make it to state for sports marketing, and we've had the largest competitive group this past year than the last four years, which is super exciting. And Core Robotics, they've been up to a lot. They are going to Worlds, which is super exciting. They got the Regional Chairman's Award at the Midwest First Robotics Competition, so they're rocking it. Hopefully, they'll do really good at Worlds. And ice fishing, it is only their second year in existence, but they've had the biggest team so far with 24 students and two girls. I was one of them. It was super exciting. At our Pewalki tournament, we took second and third place with two of our teams, and we got to go to state, which was held in La Crosse, and that was super exciting. We got to fish all day. A couple of our people got interviewed, and they were on TV for it, so it was super cool.
All right, now I'll be talking to you on more of the sports side of North. So track soccer and softball, girl soccer and girl softball, just started, so there's not much to report on that yet. Track, we have a huge number of girls out for track this year, which is really exciting to see. And as for softball, it's predicted to be a really good season. Maddie Anderson's committed to a D1 school, so it should be exciting to see where they go. Dance had a really good year. They won tons of awards throughout the year. And in regionals, they took second, I believe, overall, which is really good. Hockey, they went to state for the fourth year in a row as a co-op.
And we've had the largest competitive group this past year than the last four years, which is super exciting. And Core Robotics, they've been up to a lot. They are going to Worlds, which is super exciting. They got the Regional Chairman's Award at the Midwest First Robotics Competition. So they're rocking it. Hopefully, they'll do really good at Worlds. And ice fishing, it is only their second year in existence, but they've had the biggest team so far with 24 students and two girls. I was one of them. It was super exciting. At our pewalki tournament, we took second and third place with two of our teams. And we got to go to state, which was held in La Crosse. And that was super exciting. We got to fish all day. Couple of our people got interviewed. They were on TV for it. So it's super cool.
All right, now I'll be talking to you on more of the sports side of North. So, track soccer and softball, girl soccer and girl softball, just started. So there's not much to report on that yet. Track, we have a huge number of girls out for track this year, which is really exciting to see. And as for softball, it's predicted to be a really good season. Maddie Anderson's committed to a D1 school. So it should be exciting to see where they go. Dance had a really good year. They won tons of awards throughout the year. And in regionals, they took second, I believe, overall, which is really good. Hockey, they went to state for the fourth year in a row as a co-op. Marquette's a pretty big team. I know as far as hockey goes in Wisconsin, and they defeated them in the sectional finals, which was exciting. And they made it all the way to semifinals in state. So close to state, but not all the way. Cheer, they placed ninth in state. I know they took a couple of other banners throughout the year. And then basketball. So basketball just received a new coach. And so they had a really, really good season, the best since 2002. And they took the first playoff game, which is something new. In the past, that has not been a record for girls' basketball for North. And really cool, the basketball team got to participate in a program called W7. So W7, it's not in the picture up here. But it's, W7 is a radio station that advertises women's sports, women's high school sports. And so what they did is they came and pretty much recorded all of our games. And they livestreamed some of them, which was really cool, and broadcasted them. And then after the games, they interviewed some of the players, which is really exciting because in girl sports, you don't see that very often, especially at the high school level. And then at the end of the season, we had a couple of players receive honorable mention in the conference, which is a big achievement. And we even had one player receive second team all-conference, which means that you're one of the best 15 players in the conference. So that's exciting. And then boys' basketball, they had a pretty good season. And they also received some people with honorable mention and second team and first team. So the difference between second team and first team is just a matter of second team is that best 15, and I think first team is that best 10, maybe? Gymnastics, also a very good year for them. They took fifth as a team in state. And they went to state as a team for the first time in 11 years. And three girls placed in the top five individually. Wrestling, there was one wrestler that had his 100th varsity win, which is exciting for him. And they placed top four on average of all the meets that they went to. All right, and then some events at North.
For National Arts Society, we just took applications for this year's incoming applicants. They'll be getting their acceptance letters late March, early April. So that's exciting for them. And our introduction ceremony will be coming up shortly after that. And for the Scholar-Athlete Banquet, we will be having that in late April, where we will recognize all of our scholar athletes. And scholarships will be given out. They'll be recognized. That'll be fun. And then prom, they've started planning that. It's called "A Night in Greece," and it will be at the Performing Arts Center again. And for Avid, a lot of stuff has been happening. We had the Aviditorial at our school. We had the showcase where administration and board members and other teachers came. And they walked around the school. And they got to see what we were doing, which was super cool because it's only North's third semester in Avid. And to see how far it's grown was super exciting. And they have all their incoming freshmen that just signed on. So we got a bunch of new Avid kids. And we got to recognize our counselor, Ms. Warner, because she received the Herb Cole Educational Foundation Recognition Award, which is super cool. And in school, she's not only a counselor, she's also the Key Club advisor, cross-country coach, and rock climbing coach. And everybody can say that we recognize her as a leader in and outside of school with everything that she does, which is super cool. And yeah, those are the updates. If there are any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions? Well, now, both of you are seniors this year?
I'm a junior.
Junior.
Yes.
Brianna, you're a senior. What are you going to do next year?
I got accepted into Marquette, which is my top school. But I won't be going right away next year. I'm actually going to be enlisting in the military. So I'll be going to basic training. But once that's done, I will be going reserves and attending Marquette.
Thank you for choosing to serve our country.
Thank you for choosing Marquette.
You're all my mother.
Thank you guys for listening.
Yes, excellent school. Yes, any other questions? Well, thank you for updating us on North. Great job. You had a smiling principal behind you the whole time. Thank you, girls. Okay, we're at the time of our meeting where we allow our citizens to address the school board. Seeing we have, we have seven people signed up at this time. If there's anybody else that does want to address the board, perhaps in any of the other rooms, please come forward and sign up on a sign-up sheet here. We have seven people. And since we have seven, I think we're going to be still good for three minutes. I think we'll be fine with that. So, we're going to start with Ellie McHenry and on deck, Jason Nye, I believe.
Hi, I'm Ellie McHenry. I'm the president of the Education Association of Waukesha. And I'm here to discuss teacher retention. According to a Wisconsin Public Radio article, enrollment in teacher programs nationwide has fallen by 35%. Along with fewer people entering the profession, there are also issues around retaining teachers. In Waukesha, over the last three school years, 316 professional staff members have left. 98 retired and 218 resigned. Most of the resignations came at the end of the school years, but some came during the school year itself and a few within the first two or three months of those years. Those numbers represent a turnover rate every year of about 10% of the staff. Over the last three years, we have hired over 300 new teachers. How does this impact our students? One of the keys to bridging the achievement gap is to provide the stability that is lacking in so many students' lives. The loss of so many experienced, well-trained teachers has an impact. The American Educational Research Journal found that students whose teachers left mid-year lost 54 days' worth of academic growth, nearly a third of the school year. So what is driving this increase in resignations? When asked, teachers mentioned things like too many meetings, loss of autonomy, student behaviors, encroachment of prep time, loss of a voice at the table, stress, work-life balance, and lack of respect. Last Friday, the secondary physical education teachers were told via a letter that they would be losing one prep period beginning next year. The justification for that move was that physical education does not have the grading or record-keeping that other subjects do. But prep time was never meant to be time for grading or record-keeping. Prep time is supposed to be when you can reflect on your classes and your practice. It is a time to check to see how your classes went, to tweak what worked and take out what didn't. It is also a time to contact parents, write referrals if needed, and regroup. For FIED teachers, it is often a time to clean up the equipment used in the last class and get out what is needed for the next class. Losing a prep period and adding an additional class instead also adds 30 students to their caseload, all of who need time, attention, and support.
30 seconds.
What is perhaps the most disturbing about this is the manner in which it was decided. The affected staff was not consulted at all. It was decided without staff input. The professional staff in Waukesha are asked to help build a district culture, to be collegial, to be team players. It is difficult to feel like a team when you are the last to know something that is going to directly affect you. You could say that this does not affect that many staff members, but this precedent lets the rest of the staff know that they could be next. These top-down, last-minute changes do not build trust and will only exacerbate the staff turnover, which negatively impacts the students the most.
Thank you, Ellie. And Jason, before you start, I forgot to just, not everyone has been at a previous board meeting. Some of you have. And Ellie, you did a great job. Mr. O'Brien, when there's 30 seconds left, he'll just give you, let you know that there's 30 seconds left so you can kind of wrap up your comments. We also want to make sure that everyone respects one another in the room. And we're civil about this process. You know, sometimes things get emotional. And we don't encourage applauding or anything like that. Let's just listen to what each person has to say and respect them and respect the board. So I forgot to share those rules with you before we started. So, Mr. Nye, would you please come forward? And then Chris? Hannus? Sekonas is on deck.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak. Several points that I want to address that I think are extremely, extremely important here tonight when making the decision that could affect closing a school. It was stated originally that Blair does not have enough green space in our landlock. The suggestion would be to expand off of the playground and relocate offices in the area that would also assist with safety and security when people are entering. Traffic, excuse me, traffic and parking was an issue. Suggestion would be to utilize Horr Park, create a walkway between there and the school since children primarily enter off of the east side entrance door. During the previous meeting at Butler, $50,000 was offered by one parent to help with security upgrades. And was stated by the superintendent, however, it was a generous offer, and no other comments or anything were made about it. It kind of just had a bad of an eye, and that was about it, which is truly unfortunate. Traffic issues that we see at schools currently, right now, highly congested road with large volumes of traffic. So by having Blair shut down and taking and putting schools into both Hawthorne and Lowell Elementary, you're going to create more traffic issues. And especially at Lowell, being that these are major intersections, Michigan Ave, Madison, North Grandview. Two-mile walk rule that is currently in effect is very unsafe for following reasons. Obviously, traffic and the safety of our children. There are currently registered sex offenders that live near the schools. Obviously, they're outside of the 750 mark area. However, currently, there are two located within the Blair area. There are currently four registered sex offenders within Hawthorne. And there are currently four registered sex offenders located near Lowell. One of which, back in 2016, just days after his release for sexual-related offenses, wound up near the Hawthorne Elementary School and was rearrested, violating his probation.
30 seconds.
So briefly in closing remarks, when the superintendent and the school board had stated that a lot of this has to do with budget deficits and declining enrollment numbers. Let me be the first to tell you that our children are not just an enrollment number and are more than significant than a dollar sign in your budget deficit. And that having emergency resources close to Blair isn't invaluable. The things that should be focused on are the current progress and success that Blair has had. Ones that impact our children involve the safety and security of our children when critical seconds and time matter in emergencies.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Sekonas and then Ms. Cruz.
Good evening, everyone. I've been teaching in the district for 35 years. I'm a physical education teacher at Waukesha.
Sorry for blowing your name there.
That's okay. That's okay. For the last 26 years, I've been teaching at Waukesha South High School. And I have a passion for students, a passion for fitness. And throughout my years, I've seen several changes. I've seen our department go from six teachers down to four. I've seen our class sizes at one time have 45 to 50 students. I've seen engineering students exempt from FIED. I've seen athletes exempt from FIED. When I was brought into the meeting and our principal, Becky, newcomer, told us about losing a prep hour, my heart sunk. I thought, "How much more can you ask of all the FIED teachers in the Waukesha School District?" And then I read the statement that said, "The rationale for this move is that there's less correcting and less record-keeping." So I wanted to take a look. And I sat down today and I said, "I wanted to look at my schedule." And I looked at, I teach personal fitness. I teach a truns class, which is an aerobics class. And all the things that I do. I do pre, mid, post tests, goal-setting, reflection papers. In my field and court classes, I grade quizzes and do pre-post fitness tests and enter data into TriFit machines. I do tournament schedules. In lifeguarding, I do worksheets, quizzes, portfolios, assessments. I help the kids with applications. I have 12 community resources that I work with to hopefully obtain them employment. In all my classes, I enter engagement grades every two weeks. I enter cardio grades every two weeks. And this is just the paperwork. Now, today, when I set up for my classes, it took me 20 minutes to set up for my lifeguarding class. I then had to set up nets for my field and court classes. And then after that, during my lunch hour, I set up spin bikes for my truns class. That was about one full prep of just setting up. My question is, when are we supposed to do our paperwork? We are physically active all day. I don't sit down at a desk unless I have lunch. And a classroom teacher, they could have the kids doing videos, doing student work time. We have no time for that. We have many good, hard-working FIED teachers out there that want to give the best for our students. I ask that you reevaluate your decision to take a prep away from us when we are so physically active that we need that time to sit back, enter some of our grades, call some of our parents, and not do that at night, which I do a lot of it right now with two preps. I just feel there must be another way to save this money. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Cruz, followed by Alma Delio? Alma Delio?
I have collected 45 signatures from adults to keep Blair. If we close Blair, we would need to bring every teacher and staff because we will leave behind people that have been with us for even five years or even more. And also, we're one big community full of love. Even though I'm a third grader, I'm in elementary school, I have a big mind. And one day, one day I will be president.
As a parent, I just want to say that our our report card, our school report card has been going up throughout the years because of all of our teachers, our monolingual teachers and our dual-language teachers, all of our parents. We are a community. And if you split us up, it's going to be very hard for all the scholars and for the teachers. And the community is going to be broken. And a lot of the parents are not in agreement with closing the school. Thank you.
Who would I give the papers to?
Would you give that to Ms. Zenger?
Thank you.
And thank you for being brave in addressing us. You did an excellent job.
Good afternoon. My name is Alma. I am a mother from Blair. I am here because the closing of Blair impacts me and my children. Like one of the parents just stated about sexual predators around Hawthorne, that concerns me. My children have attended Blair Elementary for 13 years. My daughter is in kindergarten. My daughter is in kindergarten.
It's very sad. A lot of mixed feelings that a school is going to be combined with another school.
But if you already have taken the decision-
We would like that mostly of the teachers will move with us to the new campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weber and then Ms. Corral. Just another 10, 15 seconds to let the translator get set.
Also, thanks to the parent that helped with the translation. That was very nice.
You're all set? Okay.
Good evening, and thank you very much for hearing my comments this evening. I was one of the parents who was unable to make the meetings about the school consolidation due to the canceling of the second meeting, and so I spoke with many parents and have read the materials that have been presented. And I just have two requests for the board this evening. The first request is, as you discuss the school consolidation, I ask that in addition to discussing the financial impact that the school district is going through, which I really do appreciate, but that you do also address the positive educational impact that this school consolidation can have on our children and our families. As you've heard this evening, we have a very strong community. Come to any one of our Culvers Nights and you'll know, and ask the managers, they probably kind of roll their eyes a little. But we are always there, and we are, and even students who leave our school come to those evenings because we have such a strong community. And we open our arms to bring the other families together. But again, what I heard from parents is that their concern is that the only conversation being had is the financial impact, and we really need to consider the importance of the academic and student support pieces that are going to be available if we are increasing our enrollment numbers. So I ask that you please speak to that. And I'd also like to concur with some of the other parents when they talk about the transportation concerns. Please consider seeking out data from our families on who will have to walk in that two-mile radius versus have access to a car or a bus, because I'd like you to consider that a very large majority of our families at specifically Blair Elementary have a low socioeconomic status, and so those resources may not be available to them. And if you remember back on your own time, or if you haven't had this opportunity, to walk with a four, five, or six-year-old for two full miles, they're not efficient. They like to jump in puddles, and they like to play, and they might do that in the first two blocks, and now they're cold. Now they're wet. Now their bodies are being exposed to the elements that we have here in Wisconsin, and to ask them to continue to walk for another 1.8 potential miles while they cry and say how cold they are and ask their parents to hold them? That is what I want you to think about as you consider what could possibly be happening to some of our families that intentionally purchased their houses close to a school because they don't have those transportation resources. So I can't speak for the other schools, but I can ask you to please consider that and accessing that data as you talk about the school consolidation. So thank you.
And Ms. Corral.
I know. Good evening. My name is Patty Correa, and I am a physical education teacher at Waukesha West High School. I was floored last week when my department was called into the principal's office, and we were being told that we would be teaching an overload of two extra classes next year with no additional compensation. My first reaction was one of pure sadness and disappointment. I guess after 33 years of teaching in this school district, I suddenly felt like we were being told that physical education was not valued or important, and we were being seen as an expendable department. The rationale was that our department was, does less in regard to record keeping and assessments, as Chris Headson said, and we have been, we have never been told that our expectations for our department were any less than any other department. We go to the same meetings, do the same work as everyone else. If so, if that were true, I would not be going home every night doing at least one or two hours of additional schoolwork. We are already the most flexible department within the building, taking on much larger class sizes than any other department to keep sections down for the district. Our numbers are going up, which signifies that students enjoy and understand the importance of fitness in their lives, which to us makes us happy, many of them doing it just for a mental health break during their pretty stressful academic day. What worries me the most, though, is that unlike all other departments, we cannot go sit at a desk and relax during a school day. We're on our feet, actively engaged throughout the whole day. I presently teach one aquatics and five sections of trends and fitness, and I'm on my feet, basically doing body pump, body combat, yoga, all very physical lessons all day long. That takes a physical toll on all of our bodies. Personally, I've already had one knee replaced, and the other is already on its way out due to overuse. On top of that, many of us are involved in coaching and clubs after the school day is over, so our day does not end at 3:05. I am currently an advisor to a service club at Waukesha West called Interact that has over 150 members. We've raised and donated over $8,500 the last four years to veterans, animals, and women shelters, environmental causes, in addition to putting hundreds of hours volunteering in our community. Teaching an additional section would force PE staff and myself to seriously consider if after-school coaching and advising is even doable any longer. I felt I needed to speak today to defend my profession. It hurt to still be seen as a roll-out-the-ball profession with little record keeping and department responsibilities when we put in the same amount of time and effort as other departments. We had thought that that scenario was long since passed. I understand that budgets are being squeezed tight, and we need to look for solutions. I truly believe that and understand that. If unfortunately, if unfortunately this would go into effect, I guess what we would ask is that taking away PLC responsibilities, advisory, and maybe CCR time to make up for the additional teaching load would have to be a compromise that possibly we could look into. Thank you for listening tonight.
Well, thank you, everyone, for addressing the board this evening. We do listen to what you have to say, and perhaps we'll be commenting on some of these specific topics as our agenda progresses. At this time, we're going to move on to our minute approval. We have two sets of minutes for approval tonight. On February 13th, we had a regular board minutes, and then also February 18th, an executive session minutes. Do I have a motion to that degree?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek. Any corrections? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by Dr. Gray.
I have three letters this evening. First one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of Classic Eight, and he's congratulating Waukesha North High School for being the recipient of Sportsmanship Award for Wrestling and Boys Hockey. Second letter also from Mr. Sternig congratulating Waukesha South High School for being recipient of Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award for Wrestling and Boys Hockey. And the third one, also from Dave Sternig congratulating Waukesha West High School for being recipient of Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship for Wrestling and Boys Hockey. And so if you haven't figured it out, we've got a combined hockey team. So they all, all three get to be the winner of that one. So congratulations to all these sports and these athletes. That's it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our Waukesha Education Foundation report. Diane Voight, do you have an update for us?
I do. Our WEF Bright Lights was planned for tonight, but it's been postponed to next month. So I'll just share a brief report at this time. Each board member received a copy of the flyer in your Friday packet for the WEF Walk/Run and Wellness Fair to be held on May 11th. A shout out to Mary Jo for designing our new logo of the form. We're encouraging all of you to think about joining Todd's team to walk or run and support a good cause.
We won it last year.
The WEF grant applications window is open until April 5th, and as we post weekly tips, we're receiving applications on a regular basis. WEF would like to thank Nathan Verish and the West End Players for passing the baskets after the Leap of Faith performances on March 1st to 3rd. Bravo to West on a wonderful musical revival, and for this act of generosity that raised $350 for WEF. WEF received $150 from Waukesha State Bank as part of the bank's 75th anniversary celebration. They gave each employee $75 to donate to the nonprofit of their choice, and two people happened to choose us. So thank you to Waukesha State Bank, and congratulations to them on 75 years of friendly service to Waukesha. WEF also welcomed a new silver sponsor, $1,000 donor in March. Welcome to AutoZone for that recognition. And one of my special pet projects, the WEF Awards nominations are available right now on the WEF website. If you have a company, group, or individual that you would like to nominate for the 2019 WEF Awards for corporate partner, community partner, or a person demonstrating a lifetime of excellence in education, please think about dropping in a nomination before the 10th of May. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. Always good to hear what's happening at the Waukesha Education Foundation. I'm moving on to our charter school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, thank you. I have just a couple items tonight. First one deals with our STEM Academy. I previously mentioned we're working on the contract and an update on that contract. It's up, it's up for renewal this June, is that it is being approved, going through approval, and it probably will come to us in the next month. And the other item, you were given a little bit of a tip on this earlier by the young ladies from north, is about the core robotics team for Waukesha. We have so much to be proud of. They did very well in the competition that took place in Chicago. I'm going to read you a little section here, but I'm going to put the whole thing in your packet on Friday. The school of Waukesha's robotics team won the chairman's award at the Midwest Regional in Chicago, Illinois Saturday. And let me read Benjamin, give us a little update on that. This award is the most prestigious award at FIRST, is the name of the organization, F-I-R-S-T. It's an acronym for, I don't know.
What's it stand for, Benjamin?
For Inspiration, Recognition of Science-
Science and Technology. There it goes. I knew that once, years ago I knew that. Okay, the most prestigious award that FIRST gives out, it honors the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate and best embodies the purpose and goals of FIRST. And Benjamin told me that this goes backwards, five years looking at what we've been doing. So this is like a, not a one-time shot. It's a very prestigious, prestigious, good word. Okay, this accomplishment qualifies the team for, oh, hick, it was right there. Why didn't you tell me it was in your letter? World Championships in Detroit coming up in shortly, from April 24th and 27th. They will be competing against 800 teams from 27 different countries at the Ford Field in Detroit. Also, I wanted to make a mention here that if you are interested in seeing this robotics process, they will be at the Wisconsin Regional, which will be on March 29th and 30th at the UWM Panther Arena, the old arena in downtown Milwaukee. If you get a chance to go to that, it is very exciting. Quite simply, you need to take some kind of a pill to calm you down. It's really fun. Team also won the first regional finalist award, which celebrates the teams that make it to the final match of the competition, and an underwriters laboratory safety runner-up award for progressing beyond safety fundamentals by using innovative ways to eliminate and protect against hazards. And there's much more on here, and again, I will, I will be including this, or Sue will be including it in the packet this week. We, we have so many things to be proud of in our district, and sometimes we lose sight of the things that are going on that aren't on the football or basketball field. So this is another one of those. It's, it's an important educational process. It shows teamwork, the teams getting together and working on it, very collaborative, very technical, and very educational. That concludes my report.
Yeah, and Monday Benjamin brought in his medals at the FNF meeting because he was running the cameras.
I saw those too.
And, you know, you could just tell the excitement in Benjamin's voice, the accomplishments of the team, and, you know, just the excitement that that program has. So congratulations to them. Great job. Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we have any public gifts given to us?
Yeah, five gifts tonight. Hawthorne Elementary School received $500 from Lynn Pascavis to purchase books and snacks. Les Paul Middle School received $5,000 from Paul and Kathleen Omen to be used for math, science, and technology integration in the classrooms. Les Paul Middle School also received $1,000 from SPX Transformer Solutions, Inc. to be used for the STEM Girls. Waukesha South High School Baseball received $700 from Myers to help pay for camp shirts and equipment. And lastly, Woodyar Elementary School received $800 from St. Luke's Church to use for student resources, lunch assistance, and field trips.
Thank you. Some of these are repeat givers, our community?
Can I intervene?
Oh, sure.
Because I want to add something to the Myers thing.
Sure.
You know, we've got another powerful partner with us there. The other day, I finally got over to some of you to see what happened at that school back in December when we flooded it.
Right.
And last month, we, we heard that Myers contributed, I think, $4,000 to the help of putting it back together. I would encourage you, if you get a chance, just 15 minutes to stop over there one day with Garrett and see what they've done with the lobby over there, because it's, that's Myers' money. They bought and fixed the lobby for us, and it's a phenomenal job.
Yes. We have, we have a great community that's very giving, and we thank you for, for, for these gifts. In your consent agenda, we have a number of categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity in just a moment. There were no expulsions. I thought there was one, but we have a couple coming up, I think. So is there anything that anyone would like to have set aside for separate discussion? Okay, Ms. Reinacek, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of six resignations, seven retirements, four leaves of absence, and one new teacher contract. The information was provided in your packet. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the vote.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Karen?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Gray, do you have anything?
Sure, I have a few things. I would again like to echo the congratulations for Joel Warner, North Guidance Counselor, as well as add Principal Ida Cruz-Ferrin to that. Congratulations for being COOL Award winners this year, so that's a wonderful honor and excellent representatives for our school district. You also saw some, some information earlier on the Addams Family Musical at North. Wonderful musical. I also attended South Into the Woods and West Leap of Faith this last weekend, and I will say without a doubt, we have the most talented kids in the state of Wisconsin. They all did, I mean, every one of them was, was a wonderful event. A few things on upcoming election, in the April election, we, the city has been working with us to remove voting sites from our schools and putting them into other locations. So the latest is Prairie School will now be shifted to St. John Newman. South High School will be shifted to the National Guard Armory. Bethesda School will be shifted to Ascension Lutheran, and Blair will be shifted to St. William's Campus Catholic School. So I- So I think there may be only one or two schools that we have in place, but I think over time, the city will work to help us shift those to other locations. And when we do have these elections in our schools, we do have, we do hire specific security guards to work those, so that hopefully that eliminates any issues that people are worried about with people coming into the school. So with that, I think we're good. I just want to remind folks that I know that we've had a number of meetings regarding the school consolidation plan, and my team, as well as others, continue to update those plans, being prepared for a potential transition. And whatever the process tonight, we'll continue that right on up till the first day of school. So we've done this before. We know how to do this. We've done this with the Saratoga and Randall situation, and I think that we have some wonderful people in this district that will go out of their way to make these things work. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports. We rotate every month which committee gets to speak first, and we're going to start out with Teaching and Learning, given by Chairperson Patrick McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held March 5th, 2019. On that, we had two information items that appear in the agenda this evening. The first information item is Assistive Technology Update. Print disability is defined as a student's inability to access standard print format. This inability can be secondary to multiple factors, including visual impairment, physical disability, or a learning disability. Regardless of the underlying cause, individuals with a print disability cannot access print in the standard way. The School District of Waukesha has placed a priority on providing accommodations to students who are unable to access reading materials successfully. Assistive technology specialists Jessica Parlay and Nicole Gasser provided the board members with an overview and examples of how this technology works. Our second information item was a Special Education Update. Directors of Special Education Jason Gehan, Karen Peterson, and Patty Hubble provided the board members with an update related to special education and other services that are provided throughout the district. This includes instructional and behavioral supports to students, as well as the training we provide to special educators and other staff to better prepare them to meet the diverse needs of our students today. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. The next Teaching and Learning Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 2nd.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Safety and Security Committee, presented by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 18th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. And Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mrs. Reincheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no items to report on this evening.
We took care of it all in the consent agenda, right? Okay, thank you. Our Policy Committee is next, given by Mr. Baumgart.
We do have a report. We have, excuse me, have a couple action items and a couple discussion items. Share with you the action items. This is the second reading, and we'll be seeking approval on this, are the ones I brought forward to last month. Policy, oops, change pages. Policy 0131.1, Bylaws and Policies. In this one, I was talking with you about the possibility of changing the way we do policies. Proposed policy change that would create a more efficient policy approval process so that the committee and the board would maintain oversight and awareness of the policies while expediting some of the policy revisions. If you recall, there's actually two policies that are connected here, but if you recall, the big part of this one was we see a number of policies coming through the process that we use with NAOLA that are quite simply non-debatable. It's things that are going to be changed legally, and it might be simple words, or it might be something more complicated. We also have policies that are new, and we have policies that we are revising. And in the policy that we are asking for you to look at tonight, we divided them into those three categories, the legal ones, saying that these can be dealt with at the committee meeting and don't have to come here for final approval, after two readings on top of it. The new policies come through the process that we have been using, where we will bring them here for reading, for discussion, take them back for the committee if we have to change anything, and bring them back for reading and approval subsequently. That's new policies. And the third one is the revisions of policies, which will be dealt with with the committee, and then the committee bringing them here for a reading and approval in one meeting. Obviously, the board will be kept informed of anything that is changing, so you know what's going on all the time. We're not trying to pull anything past you. As an example, the next committee meeting and the next board meeting, if we do not change this, would be seeing 20 policies that are going through the legal process, three that are going through the new policy process, and about another 20 or 25 that are going to go through the committee process with one reading to the board. That's what's laying ahead of us.
And when you say the legal process, it's being driven by state and federal statutes, and we basically have to follow those, so.
Absolutely. State or federal. In fact, those are the words, I don't have those words in front of me, but those words, you'd see those words, in compliance with the state or in compliance with the federal agencies. So with that review of what we've talked about previously, Policy 0131.1, I move for approval of the policy revision as presented.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Voight. Discussion? Mr. Brian?
I understand what you're trying to do, and I support it, but I think one of the concerns I would have is if we don't have some sort of role, even if it's just the legal part of it, in seeing a policy as it's revised, we kind of lose track of the policies. And I'm not saying we need to debate them or anything like that, but what I would say is if in the report of the chair, the committee, they include in their report the red line version of the changes.
We can do that.
And they wouldn't have to be approved, and then a board member could say, okay, they could pull that policy out later and say, here's an area where I think we should address something.
We can do that.
That would mean the board member would have to be proactive to drive a change, and yet everybody would be informed.
We'd appreciate it if they read them.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea to read them, yes.
And, no, actually, Dr. Cook and I have talked about the fact that we need a way to keep you informed of any of the changes. Some of them are so simple, it's like eliminating the word "education" or "of education" from the term "board of education."
Yeah.
We're told to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Or making E-L-L-E-L. But we will let you know about all those, Kurt. We'd be happy to do that.
Just put it in a nice little ballot document that's part of your report, and then we can read it and love it. Thank you.
Then I'll run a test on you.
Any other questions?
Having a discussion? Motion in place, yes.
Yes, we do. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on changing Policy 131.1, Bylaws and Policies, and 155 Committees.
Given, oh, is it for both? Or just the first one?
It's both together, right? Bill, or did you just do the first one?
No, I'm sorry, that would be incorrect.
Okay, it's just the first one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was me mishearing.
It's just 0131.1.
Yes, sorry, my fault.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Sorry about that, Bill.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder on the next one.
Actually, they are directly related, but I had not brought them up in the combination. The other one is Policy 0155, and quite simply, this is the policy that lists the board committees and whether they can take action on themselves or not. And I move for approval of the change in policy number 0155.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Voight. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Bill?
Yes. I have some revisions, three of them, the policies. We had them on the agenda. In any case, we probably now would be handling them differently, but I would, because they are on the agenda, I'm going to go through them tonight. Discussion item, first one, Revision Policy 2260, Discrimination in Access to Equal Educational Opportunity. In order to remain in compliance with the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, this policy needs to be updated with the changes. They're deleting the term "education" in the Board of Education. And there's a title change on the bottom of page two. Complaint Coordinators, eliminate the word "district" and call them Compliance Officers. And here it is. The purpose here is if somebody has a problem with the work we're doing in the area of the discrimination EEO, there are two words that are added, a couple words that are added. One is, may be delivered to the complaint and the respondent, complainant and the respondent. And if either party is not satisfied with the decision of the superintendent, they may be appealed, and process is given there. And then there's a lengthy list at the bottom of the page that the government has given us of the records that need to be maintained. This would have been the first reading on that. I'll be taking that back to the committee next Tuesday for committee action on it.
Okay. This is open for discussion, if any comments or concerns?
Corrected, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Policy 2260.01, Prohibition Against Discrimination Based on Disability. If I recall, there's similar terminology in here about if either party is not satisfied with the decision of the superintendent, he or she may appeal, blah, blah, blah. And that's the only change on that one. Again, these are the kind of things that we have to put in there. And lastly, Policy 5350 on Student Suicide. This quite simply had an omission that needed to be added to it, that includes, along with the administrator and the school psychologist, we have to put the word "school social worker" in there, and that's right in the second paragraph. And again, those will be brought back to our committee next week. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to Technology, given by Mr. Deeds.
The Technology Committee, Mr. President, did not meet last month, so no report this evening.
Okay. Do you have a meeting scheduled for?
We're working on a meeting, but nothing's been scheduled.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Deeds. Moving on to Finance and Facilities Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
It's called the dramatic pause. We had a number of action items. The first one's the approval of the WISC Resolution. After the completion of an RFP process, the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, or WISC, has been recommended as a depository and primary investment vehicle for the referendum bond proceeds. The district is already a member of WISC, so the resolution being considered is simply updating the previous document that was approved in 2008. WISC provides short-term investments that apply with state statutes and district policy with a focus on maintaining safety and liquidity. The committee approved the resolution to participate in the fund, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. We're just simply continuing to move forward with utilizing this organization, correct, as we move forward with funding the referendum?
Right, and, yes. If anyone didn't watch, I know everybody loves watching FNF. But the advisor for the bonding is also involved with being an advisor for WISC, so we had kind of a complex bonding plan, you know, to keep the rates flat and pay off early, have an option to pay off early. So having that fund and having that advisor work both of those to make sure that we manage those funds securely and have them available as needed and borrow as needed, and also lock into the rates at appropriate time. All that stuff kind of syncs together really well, and plus, they were the preferred bidder. It was bid out.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the WISC Resolution.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Kurt?
The section action item was the approval of the school consolidation plan. Over the last few months, discussions about consolidating Blair with Lowell and Hawthorne have been taking place. After several staff and parent listening sessions, the plan outlined in your packet is ready for board consideration. The plan calls for the current Blair attendance area to be reassigned to Lowell, with the exception of the dual-language choice program, which will be moved to Hawthorne. ADA and security improvements at Hawthorne would be funded by the district and occur in the summers of 2019 to 2021. Excuse me for that. The school choice window will be reopened for all students directly impacted by this change. The committee approved the school consolidation plan, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Mr. Brian?
Yes, so, look, as I said at the committee, I do not like closing schools. I'd like to have as many small schools as I could possibly have. You know, we balance trying to manage our enrollment numbers and the fact that our district benefits from having larger schools and being able to manage our student population relative to those larger schools. You know, everybody gets affected by budget cuts. I mean, we heard the physical education staff tonight, and I think they made a compelling argument for their concerns about being part of the cost savings. And definitely, the parents tonight and teachers and interested citizens make a compelling argument about Blair. I've never been a fan of closing schools. I think I've only supported one in the past, but, you know, Blair was always on the list. And if you look at it over the years, Blair was one of the schools that said, okay, are we going to close Blair? Are we going to close Blair? And instead, it was Saratoga, Randall, White Rock, Pleasant Hill. So this is not an easy decision, and there's no way of sugarcoating it. I'm not going to tell parents that it's like losing a loved one. There's no good way of saying anything about that. I wouldn't want my school to be closed either. And I do believe in neighborhood schools, and I do think they have a great neighborhood at Blair, and this is not an easy decision for the board. It never is.
Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Kurt. I agree. This is a difficult decision. It's not something I enjoy doing either. And I mentioned in one or two of the previous meetings we've done on this that boards have priorities. One of the priorities is financial. But I said, the financial priority does not take precedence over the kids' priorities. That's number one in our minds. It should be number one in our minds. It isn't in mine. So initially, I was a little bit concerned about that, but I have every confidence that the kids that are involved in this, well, not only, you know, not only is it neutral, but they will have gains when they move into the new situation. So my initial concern about this was, you know, are the kids going to be not benefiting from this or de-benefiting from it, if there's such a word, or what? I've spent time over at Hawthorne. I've been, I was very excited on the visit I had there with what I saw the kids doing and learning, and the combination of working with the students from Carroll College and things like that. A very positive environment. I found nothing at all that somebody wouldn't enjoy getting involved in. So yes, it's a difficult situation. Kids can manage this. I had to go through this with my own kids when we moved to Waukesha. They bounced from a couple schools around until we finally got settled in when Bethesda was built. One of the things that you have to encourage people to do is not put a negative thing in front of the kids that are going to be moving from one school to another school. They have to be able to see that this is an adventure that they're going to get into and be excited about it, rather than being told you're getting a raw deal here. So I think if we can make sure that the kids see this as a positive thing, make the move when they get there, it will be a positive thing. So after a certain amount of consideration... So after a certain amount of consideration on my part, I had to think this through too because I don't like it. But we have a responsibility also to all the rest of our community. And that responsibility brings finances into it. We are responsible for all of it, not just the one school. So that's a tough thing, but it's reality.
Mr. Dietz?
To me, in this decision, the, at the forefront should be obviously our students. So I guess I would be concerned that the transition plan be, you know, very effective, and we'd be on top of that. And I have every reason to believe that that'll be the case. Obviously, the communication with families and staff is a huge priority as well, as well as transportation. So as we continue to move forward, I would ask that those things be high priorities and that this board be kept informed, at least on a monthly basis, as to the progress being made in those areas and others.
Mrs. Voight?
This is one of the hardest decisions I have to make as a new school board member in the last year. Through the course of the last discussions, I really have brought to mind, you know, how, what a wonderful staff and community that was being part of the Blair, the Blair School District area. To see the principal receiving the COLA award, you know, we're talking excellence and just amazing things that are happening there. I had a chance to visit not too long ago. And it's really hard, you know, being from a small town, knowing how valuable a small school environment is. You know, I, my heart goes out to all of you and the change you have to experience. But I think it's, then I'm the Finance and Facilities Committee, and I have to look at the finance part of it. And it's hard. But, you know, my heart is for all of you. My head says we have to make this as far as a budget cut because I spent the day in Madison trying to lobby for getting more money to come up with the three and a half million we need, and it's just not there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, I, I think I said it after nap. I went to a school that, we doubled in size. It was a K through eight school. We doubled in size from when I started to when I finished. It went from 38 kids to 75 kids. And I was back there for a funeral of a classmate. He was a year behind me, but when you're that small, everybody's a classmate in all eight grades. And it's 600 kids today. And, you know, I understand the part of the community, and we're in a rural area. Our community was 15-mile radius, and even then, walking two miles wasn't what I would consider a good thing. So the challenge we have in an area like Waukesha or even the state of Wisconsin, when we're challenged to get teachers, is split classes. In the school I was in, I had one year, I was, the fourth and fifth grade was combined with the first and second grade, so the teacher had to teach four grade levels and put the fourth and fifth graders on independent learning. And I can tell you, I wasn't a great independent learner, so I kind of skipped fourth grade. So, but in a, in a community like ours, it's better to, it's easier to recruit staff, it's easier to manage staff, it's easier to apply all the extra resources we want to apply, especially with dual language with larger schools. And we do believe that overall, what we can accomplish through this consolidation is adding additional value for the kids. Can't make up for the fact we don't have the community, the local community school that I think is quite valuable and I've always supported. But I want to say one thing about our staff and the phys ed teachers that are here tonight. And I know people at Blair would also say the same thing about our staff. Since Act 10, and not saying anything negative about Act 10, but our educational staff has been the main reason we've been able to control our costs over the last 10 years. They haven't gotten pay raises. They took a huge cut at Act 10, and they really haven't made it up. We changed their health care policy. We're going to go into another approval item after this, where we're going to save close to $1.3 million by, again, sort of putting it on our staff. So these cuts that we do and the way we manage our budget has been an ongoing thing. We don't show it as cuts because we try not to cut staff, we try not to close schools. But in terms of how our staff is compensated, that additional work that we make them do, or we ask them to do, I guess, and some of them do leave, right? There's sacrifices made all around. And it's terrible when one of the sacrifices that we have to make is closing the school.
I have a couple of thoughts that I'd like to share with you. First of all, I'm not surprised that there is a ton of support for Blair this evening and throughout the course of the parent meetings. Thank you for taking an interest. Thank you for making Blair what it is. Blair is not special because of the building. Blair is special because of the students, the teachers, the administrators, the staff, the community. So it's the people who make Blair special. And the people aren't changing. Now, there's going to be some, some will be going to Lowell, some will be going to Hawthorne. So it's definitely a new location. And there are challenges as cultures merge together. I don't want to say that that's just, there's a, that's easy and there's nothing behind this. But we had a parent that wanted us to talk more to the positive impact, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And Mr. O'Brien was talking about how we can do more things with bigger schools, and maybe if we had three smaller schools, it might have been, we might have to be looking at giving up some services and programs that you have or changing those. And I just want to remind everyone here that a number of years ago, we decided to take a centralized program and decentralize that. And that program became our dual-language program at four elementary schools, which is extremely successful. And that was a positive outcome. That came from a similar kind of scenario here. And I was hoping that maybe Dr. Cook or, Dr. Cook or, Dr. Gray could maybe elaborate on how we can better serve our students and our families at larger schools versus smaller schools?
I think, you know, first of all, just the professional support staff, much easier to staff full-time or more than full-time people when there's, you know, a population of 300, 400, 500 students, although this won't, none of these schools will be 500. But when you're talking a school of 180, it's hard to efficiently or economically put in all the support positions you need. You'll put in a .5 here and a .5 there, and that's just not very effective. So that's one option. Different types of programs that we can do with a larger, larger school, a larger population. You have more parents involved with PTOs and PTAs than I've, in the last month or so, I've been to a number of PTA events. And these larger schools have many, many parents involved, many people involved. And I just think it overall presents a much larger opportunity to do more things for students, even outside of the additional professional staff.
And if, if we do move forward with this, can you explain how the plan might work? There's some multiple components to this.
Well, I think if you, if you have an hour, yes. You know, you've seen a lot of what we've done. We've continued to update the FAQ documents. We've continued to put out different PowerPoint demonstrations on what we're doing. And I, someone said each month we'd need an update. You're probably going to see an update maybe each week, maybe every other week as we start to develop. You know, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm assuming it'll be approved. But if it is, we'll be working on these plans first thing tomorrow and then going on. And then each Tuesday, we are, we have set aside every Tuesday now until the end of the year to really focus on this. You know, we pull in other people to work on this. But I think we'll have a little bit more detailed, better plan early next week.
Okay. So do you know roughly if this goes through, roughly when people will start receiving communications on the details?
Well, after tonight's meeting, depending on the situation, we will send out one communication on what has happened this evening. But then, I would say shortly thereafter, I believe Joe, open enrollment is taking place very soon.
Yeah, we, we have letters to go out to all the families notifying them of which attendance area school their child would be assigned to. We have a open school, we're opening up school choice beginning this Friday, the 15th. Through some parent feedback at the, at the listening sessions that we held and the presentations, we've decided to keep that window open until April 5th. So families will have the opportunity to identify and select their school within the next three-week period of time. We also extended the time because of spring break. As far as open house and transitioning, once the administration is set, we'll be working with administrators on building open houses, opportunities for kids to do visits to schools to where they're going to be. So we have some ideas out there, but we're going to begin our communication in the next two days to families to alert them as to which school that they would be attending.
Okay. And there was a, one of our citizens addressed us, talking about transportation, or a couple, talking about transportation, having some concerns. Can, can you give us a sense of, I know we have the Sheriff's Department that does safety studies for us?
Yep.
And they make recommendations? Can you kind of talk through what that's like?
Sure.
I mean, we've had, we get these every year.
Yeah. We have a district-wide, it was conducted by Mr. Hazely about six or seven years ago, I think is what the date was, maybe eight, that went through the entire community map and identified unusually hazardous transportation areas. Since that study was completed, we've continued to update that with the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department, doing studies of neighborhoods based off of traffic volume, sidewalk availability, crossing unusually hazardous streets. So for instance, like a crossing of St. Paul Avenue, that would automatically trigger a bus to the students that would have to cross. We will be revisiting the unusually hazardous transportation plan if the board approves this. I met with first student, Annie Von Johnson, our transportation coordinator, yesterday to look at what these maps would look like and to do some preliminary, begin the preliminary planning, if the board approves this, as to what, who would trigger, what would trigger transportation, and try to identify the number of students who would be transported, both from a neighborhood standpoint and then also a regional service area standpoint for the dual-language families.
Okay. Mrs. Voight?
Do you look at things like the sexual predator locations as part of that safety transfer?
We work with the Sheriff's Department to help determine that. So the Sheriff's Department, we would ask them to study neighborhoods, and the Sheriff's Department would factor in the indicators that they would look at: speed, sidewalks, curbs, the whole business.
Mr. O'Brien?
What I would suggest is, you know, in the past, when we've had school closings or school consolidations, we've usually had a little bit more liberal application of our transportation policies. We don't, in this case, have any, what we call grandfathering. But I would say when we talk about the distance to transport, it's not a mandate that we have to limit, expect everybody to walk two miles. I mean...
It is a DPI unless it's hazardous. Otherwise, you have to apply that to everyone in the district. So if we were to say, this area, it'll be a mile, we would have to apply that literally then to everyone in the district. Now, there are things we can do, and I'm not going to get into that detail now, but there are some things that we could potentially do to mitigate that, but...
Well, I think, I think you can, I'm just saying be as liberal as you can, okay? During this transition period, if I was a parent, I wouldn't want to hear that the DPI is going to tell me I can't, that you can't move, you can't help. And be as liberal as you can in this policy. I know we're trying to save money, but it's a transition period. In the past, we've always been as flexible as we could relative to transitions during school.
Yeah, I mean, and the other ones we have done in the past, Randall, Saratoga, yes, we have done exactly what you're talking about.
Right. So we also had a parent address us tonight that was talking about the dual-language program and the teachers, and are the teachers going to be going with the program?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on, on how that's going to look or how that might work?
Basically, we intend to keep the program intact, and they will...
So we're not rehiring people? We're, we're asking people to...
No, they're already, they're already hired. I mean, we, and the other part of this is we have no, no layoffs as a result of this plan as well. So I mean, the dual-language teachers will all go to Hawthorne. There may be, very likely, there will be other Blair teachers going to Hawthorne because Hawthorne teachers may, you know, as we open up the, the transfer window, others might say, well, maybe I would like to go to Lowell or another school for that matter. So we would generally give those teachers from those three schools priority if they want to transfer to another school where there's an opening. But that usually opens up the door to kind of keep an entire staff together, or most of it anyways.
Discussion? Amanda?
Yes, thank you. I guess this would be for Dr. Gray or Dr. Cook. Do we have a relationship with the police department or Sheriff's Department to, if this proceeds, to help attract flow with those schools? Because we all know that there is that major concern.
I'm assuming they would. I mean, I...
Something that we look into?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the, it would be the police. I don't know, the sheriff would do it.
I figured.
But the police department, they have, I mean, they've helped us with Randall STEM, which is absolutely the worst situation in the city.
That is bad.
But I'm sure they will do the same here, or they will make recommendations to us on how to maybe correct that. And that might even be some, some capital improvements to, you know, cutouts or something to that effect that we've done at other schools.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Reincheck?
I just had a quick comment. I know this, I've not been in your shoes, and I, I don't know what that feels like. But if I were to ask my now 17-year-old, it was my choice to take him out of his school that he had grown up with, with his friends until he was in fourth grade. It was, it was our choice as parents to take him out and to put him in a school that we thought was best for him. And if he were to, if he were to be here and speak, he would tell you that he didn't realize that all his future best friends, or some of them, were waiting for him. Like, he made new friends at that school, and he still kept the old friends. And we had birthday parties. He had half, half-old friends and half-new friends, and we always just called them. And then they all became friends. And then when they got, when he went into high school, they all got together again, and he had even double the size friends. So I know this isn't making it any easier for you, but if you can somehow, if this goes through, your kids are looking up to you to make sure it's going to be okay. And if, and if you could say anything, I didn't know what to say at the time with my own kids, but if he were to be here and tell you, it was, it was okay. It all turned out in the end. And I just hope that you guys keep that, that family atmosphere that you have now, but that your family just gets bigger.
Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. A lot of my sentiments have already been expressed by other board members, but I'll just echo them once more. Thank you to the families and the individuals that spoke to us tonight, those that emailed us behind the scenes. If this does go forward, I would echo the sentiments of Mr. Dietz for administration to be very clear with the transition plans, which sounds like those plans are in place. While we realize that the state DPI does dictate the transportation guidelines, that as my, some of my questions were to see what we can do with the local PD to help with that traffic control. I do pick up at Lowell, at Hawthorne, and I, yeah, don't want to do that. There's been a lot of talk about Blair and Hawthorne. Lowell seems to kind of be in the shadows here. I've spoken with both the principals of Lowell and Hawthorne, and both of their, them and their schools and their families are ready and waiting with open arms to bring in these new families. I love the culture that I see at Blair, and I hope that you would share the excitement to share that both school spirit culture and ethnic cultures amongst... to share that both school spirit, culture, and ethnic cultures amongst those other schools. So, all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote for approval of the school consolidation plan?
Diane Voight?
No.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven, one, Sue. One of our primary responsibilities as a board is to hold administration accountable for the policies and the decisions that this board makes. Rest assured, this board will be working closely with our administration, making sure our administration is moving forward in a good capacity to communicate with our families, our teachers, our administrators. My hope is, is that we look at this as an opportunity and that by consolidating the schools, they are stronger and we can provide better services for our students. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening, for the passion that you bring to your child's education is off the charts. And that's the passion, I believe, that's going to make both Hawthorne and Lowell stronger as, as we move forward. So thank you for your input and your dialogue, not only this evening, but over the past several, several months, really. So, thank you, everybody. Back to Kurt.
Yes, the next action item was the approval of the health insurance plan changes for 2019, 2020. There is a projected increase of 14% in health costs based on claims and medical inflation. The district budgeted for a 5% increase. The remainder is targeted to come from plan design changes. The proposed 2019, 2020 changes will eliminate the district contribution to employee health savings accounts, lowers the active plan deductibles to the IRS allowed minimums, and implements an ABSS limited RX network. Though the plan calls for restructuring of our health benefit, there will be no increases in employees' out-of-pocket maximums or health network. These changes are projected to save almost $1.5 million. We'll be a couple hundred thousand short of, of making up the difference even with these changes. The committee approved the 2019, 2020 health insurance plan changes as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. Brian?
Just quickly to add that, you know, the district is, is taking this action in an effort to keep the premium costs down for our employees and for the district. But it is, it does reduce the benefit to our employees in terms of the health savings account. There still is a health savings account, but the district's contribution is being reduced, being reduced. We are trying hard to keep the maximum out-of-pocket cost limited in this plan. This is a much easier choice for us than what we're doing with the FED department, for example, or the school that we just announced closing. We have to find a dollar someplace, and this was one of the better places to look, but it still has an impact on our staff.
If I could just put it perspective, the, the increase, the raw dollar increase that we would have without doing anything is roughly $2 million. And that's about what we're going to get in, in new funding from the state. That's if the, the governor and the two legislative bodies agree on that number. It's not going to go any higher than that. It could be less. So that, obviously, and, and that doesn't account for any other salary or other benefit increases. But that's where the state of, the state funding is at right now. Not, not a good situation.
And we probably won't know the final details till...
By October.
Yeah, into the fall. So this will be debated quite lengthy and at the state legislature level. Mr. Brian?
And I will say with all these budget cuts, it, it is appreciated that families provide their input, educators, professionals provide their input. Our professional staff works as hard as they do to try and manage these without impacting families or professionals. Our superintendent has had the administrative courage to move forward of plans without making the board individually force things. The board does have a, an opportunity to go back to administration anytime and ask them for more information on a suggested cut. Some of them are beyond questioning, and some of them aren't, you know? But at some point in time, we have to lock into what our budget is for next year. So please don't feel like your input tonight was discarded. It wasn't. I heard, I heard loud and clear what people were saying tonight.
Mr. Baumgart?
I'm just going to add to what Kurt was saying there, because I've been around a long time, and I was here when we would have budget cut meetings. We would sit in this room and cut and cut and cut until we got into the millions of dollars, which often left people out, you know? We, we, we reduce staff, laid them off. We cut programs that currently we have back in place because we've done some better managing of our finances over the years. Certainly not because we're getting a lot of help out of Madison and we're doing these things. We have been through some very painful, brutal meetings that would last hours and hours because of financial difficulties. Whereas even though this is difficult right now, it's safer than what we were doing in those days.
Yeah, the one thing that resulted the way we used to do things is, what would happen is, one set of parents would be supporting band, another would be supporting counselors, another would be supporting gifted and talented. And so what wound up happening is, parent would be pit against parent, student would be pit against, they, they would be, you know, arguing back and forth, and it, it just was a horrible...
It was horrible.
Horrible public process. I appreciate you bringing that up, Bill. Ms. Reincheck?
During the meeting, we spoke on, I think it was Jeff from Benaco was talking...
Jeff Schultz?
Mm-hmm. About the, the savings that the, the faculty wouldn't be able to get their prescriptions at Walmart, CVS, or Sam's Club. But if we went with just Walgreens and Meyer and some other local people...
Independence, yeah.
They would save 10%, but it would save us, what was it, one point? $113,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
And then also the free clinic that Chris gave the commercial for, if they go to the free clinic for things like just usual testing, maybe a sinus infection, flu, ear infection, anything like that, that's completely free. So they're even open at nights and on Saturday mornings. So all, all the labs are free, and it's like $2 for antibiotics. So there are ways that this does benefit, but unfortunately, we do have to make this cut.
Yeah, only about, I believe, 50% of our employees utilize the clinic, 52% I think, and 48 do not. And their spouses are about 25%, and their children, I think, were also in the low twenties. So there's, I'm putting in a plug, I'll second your plug on that, visiting the clinic. If you want to save some, some money, that's a, that's a good place to do it. Mr. Brian?
Yes, and the, the statistics on the clinic, the utilization has gone up every year, and, and that's the effort of the staff to use that clinic. It's an expense for the district. We, we, we do hire professionals, and we do share that cost with the, the county and the city. And actually, the county has a higher utilization rate of that clinic program than we do. Look, our staff, if there's anyone who's made sacrifices over the last 10, 15 years to help us do what we do today, it's our staff. And so certainly, I'm going to want to take a look at, at things as we move forward. I will say one thing, year to year, we've run a surplus in this district. We can't solve budget problems that are structural with one-time money. Decline enrollment is a structural problem. And, you know, if we were to lay a cut this year that we should make now, such as addressing this healthcare or consolidating schools, we'd just have to do it next year, and we'd be losing the money and never recovering it for this year. When we look at how we staff and how we allocate people and resources, I mean, that's a different equation, which maybe we can study some more. But this is the type of stuff we do all the time to try and make it so that we don't make our educational staff's jobs harder.
Any other further discussion or questions on the health insurance plan changes? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving those health insurance plan changes for 2019, 2020.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Steve.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven with seven yays and one abstention.
Kurt?
Okay, information items. We do have our wonderful monthly budget update. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of February. $14,222,869 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $9,252,136 was expended during the month. There was $942,785 reported in the special, special education fund revenue, and $2,254,329 was expended. The district is operating in accordance to our budget projection in other areas. Information item number two, referendum 2019 summer projects. Darren Clark from our business, or business department, provided an update on the construction slated to happen during the summer of 2019. The district will be bidding out 11 sites for secure entrances and the installation of an elevator at the Hawthorne campus. The projected budget for this work is $4.325 million. There are several funding sources for these projects, including the referendum funds, state safety grant, and site improvement budgets. The budget will be finalized once the bid process is complete. And by the way, on the Hawthorne elevator, the cost of that is coming out of kind of our reserve funds. We looked at having some from our reserve. If you remember, we sold a piece of land north of here, or south of here, over on 164. That's about, about as much as we've allocated to help do this. So we're not taking everything from the taxpayers and from referendums. If we have reserve funds that we can allocate to these projects, we, that we feel comfortable...
I think that was $600,000 roughly?
$100,000, so. There are no discussion items this month, and, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We're going to get into other business. One logistical thing that I just want to say is it's time to sign up for going to graduations ceremonies. I'll just pass this around and sign up for those. And also, are there any other recommended things to schedule for our full Board of Education future meetings or any other agendized items that the board would like to look at at future committee meetings at this time? Any thoughts? Mr. Brian?
I just have a, in Mr. Gray's or someone's report next time for the, the board, kind of a summary of the, of the overall budget adjustments we made, just kind of a consolidation summary just presented to the board, not for our approval, but for us to just kind of put it all together in one big picture. And I would encourage board members, if they have questions or concerns about what they know of the cuts that we talked about tonight, that they should contact administration and try and get more information about that. Okay?
And as we, several of us have mentioned, we want to keep tabs on how the consolidation is going. We should be reporting that out on every full board meeting in some capacity. We can work on what that looks like.
Yeah, and I, I would expect it to be a lot more often than that as well. So, I mean, as we go along, we'll get information to staff and parents of the three impacted schools as well.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we do have a need for closed session. We have both items C and D for consideration tonight. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Baumgart?
Yes, I can, I can...
Do both.
Both of these right away?
Yeah.
Yeah. I move we adjourn to executive session for Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) to consider employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation of any public employee over which a government body has jurisdiction or responsibility, exercise of responsibility. Likewise, I adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851-e for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties and investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required, require a closed session, and I move.
Is there a second to that?
I second both items.
Okay. Second by Mr. O'Brien. This requires a roll call vote. Sue?
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight, zero. I'm not sure how long the closed session is going to take. Todd, do you have a sense?
About an hour of...
Hour, maybe?
Two hours.
I mean, it could be long, could be long. The reason why I'm asking is, is we are scheduled to reconvene into open session at the end of our closed session, and we may be taking action, we may not be. It just depends on what happens in closed sessions. So if you want to wait around, you can do so. Otherwise, I hope you have a good evening. Yeah. Why don't we take a five-minute...